You're recording outside, Dave?
You are. You're re-recording.
Okay. The world is pushing that kind of thing because of the adversary who is the God of this world. And then he has individuals, people who are totally sold out to him, seed boys, that spread this kind of thing. Again, that's why the whole Goth movement, so involved to be so dark, gloomy, dark, brooding. What do you have in those? And so then you have people that kill themselves, like Kurt Cobain and some of these others, that kill themselves and it's like, wow, he had the guts to take his own life. Guts? That wasn't guts. That was a devil spirit for one, but it's really cowardice. Why is it cowardice? Cause you get to the point that you no longer are willing to what? Fight, remember? Oppression, the clouds keep coming down, depression. At depression, you give up. You just sit there and you give up. And finally, you allow this kind of thing to continue. They give up to the point that they give up their own life, cause the spirit says, you know what? It's really no use in fighting. What are you even doing here? You are such an annoyance to people. You take, you're, you know, you're taking up their time. You've used them, you've hurt them, you, what are you even here for? You know, you're better, you'd be better off gone. It would be better for your family if you were gone. Then they won't have to deal with you. Better for your family? Now they gotta deal with all the stuff involved with Pete, the questions about you committing suicide? Better for your family? That's a lie from hell. There's nothing worse for your family than for you to commit suicide. And now they gotta deal with all the embarrassment and the hurt and the questions and the concerns and, was it something I said? Did I do something? If only I'd done this, if only I'd said that. And then it just breeds that. It's a breeding ground for the next level of spirits. Cause now they can be, they start condemning themselves for some imagined thing that they did or said or whatever, that they think was the cause. They weren't the cause, devil spirits. It's so despicable and sly and deceptive and creepy. But the simplicity of the word keeps us out of this. Things like what? The joy of the Lord is our strength. Joy and peace in believing. What's that? Romans fifteen? The word, class. It's the word that delivers us. I confess that I've been delivered from the power of what? Darkness. Darkness, hello? Darkness, gloom, oppression, depression, sullen, darkness. I've been delivered from the power of darkness by my Lord and Savior. That's right. Verse thirteen, Romans fifteen thirteen. Another verse to add to the list. Now the God of hope. Hey, do we have hope?
Yes.
Are we hopeless?
No.
Are we downhearted?
No.
No, 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 no. Fill you with all joy. Hey, that sounds like the opposite of being depressed and sullen and all that, doesn't it? Joy. Joy is encouraging. Joy is a fruit of spirit. Joy makes you effervesce with an inner exuberance. You see why joy is so important? Because no matter how low the clouds go, you're bubbling up on the inside. You understand? It makes you effervesce with an inner exuberance. And it's encouraging. It's not discouraging. Joy encourages you. You see how important it is to be around in fellowship where you can hear the manifestations of the spirit? Why? Because the manifestations of the spirit, they don't tear you down and push you down, do they? No, no, no. The word says that they do what?
Build you up.
They build you up. They edify you. Sounds like the opposite of oppression, doesn't it? Sure, it builds you up. And what else does it? How does it build you up?
Through edification.
And comfort.
Exhortation and comfort.
Exhortation. Exhortation is to encourage toward a more worthy endeavor. It's God saying, come on, kids, you can do it. I've called you. You're my people. I've given you all my power, remember? All the wonderful things God says that just encourages us. The world is hitting you with gloom every day, every day. And yet we get to fellowship once a week. No wonder you're gloomy. You get to fellowship once a week? You get the world beating the crap out of you seven days a week, all day long. And you get to fellowship for an hour and you're watching your watch to make sure it's not an hour and one second. Cause you're missing something. Yes, you are. You're missing being gloomy. You're missing depression. You're missing despair, despondency, melancholy. You're missing your sullen spirit waiting for you the second you walk out the door. Sounds funny, but it's more true than you allow yourself to think right now. You walk out the door of fellowship, bam, there you go again. And you get that phone call, oh, really? And you're gone. And you don't even know. Then you come back to the fellowship and you're like, you put on your smile. Hi. And you walk out in a spirit and now you're back. There you go, your shoulders. But here's what I hear. There you go. I'm just teaching, I love you. But here's what I hear when you walk. Why? Is that the way someone born again of God's Spirit, an ambassador for Christ walks? No. An ambassador, you're somebody, you're built up, you're strong, you're powerful, your shoulders are back, your head's up high. Hot, why? Just sullen spirits lift your head up like this? Oppress, spirits of oppression, do they make you wanna stand up strong and tall and straight? Depression, does that make you wanna be like this? Hell, no. But you're like this. Your shoulders are slumped, see? Push yourself and, and you're not smiling. And when you do, it's a little, that kinda little. There's a little exercise that we do. That I'm gonna suggest. And we'll see the scriptures on it. But anyway, you understand? That's why so many times, throw your shoulders back, get your head up high. That's right. And that physiology has an effect on your mental state where you can start to change your mind. Plus great verses like this. Now the God of hope. Fill you with all joy and what? Peace. Quiet acquiescence. Hey, I just remembered that the manifestation of the spirit tells of the interpretation and prophecy, edify you by way of exhortation and comfort. Comfort gives you quiet acquiescence and peace. Yeah, you're like that. In believing that ye may abound in hope, not hopelessness, but hope, through the power of the Holy Ghost. How is that for wonderful? Holy Spirit. Holy Spirit. Okay, uh, back to the blue book. And, top page eight. So we're wrapping this up. Most people believe in order to gain the spiritual heights in life where they can tap the resources of God, it is necessary to strain, drive and struggle. They think that gaining spiritual results is like an air hammer. The harder one presses the hammer, the quicker he gets the job done. However, this is not the case. When we have stress and strain, we tie ourselves into knots. We will never get out of our prisons that way. Just the opposite occurs. We bring more and more frustration to ourselves. It is not stress and strain, but believing and acting on the word that bring release. Um, do we have one of the older blue books that has the, or you have that insert, Evelyn?
Yeah, I have it. You want the insert? Oh, no, I don't have a, the insert, it's upstairs. Uh, it's on page eight. Here, you want it?
Yeah, thanks. This is one that has the older version. It's one of my old blue books, not the oldest one, cause foolishly I let someone borrow it. And that's the way that comes. Never heard from since. Okay, the bring release. Let's see. James one twenty-one. Wherefore lay apart all filthiness and superfluity of naughtiness, and receive with meekness the engrafted word, which is able to save your souls. And that filthiness, that's interesting. Be a great study, something to work and look up, but the works of evil from the least of the worst form. To lay apart means to put off. We are to put off filthiness, the works of evil, from the least of the worst form, and subjectively receive God's word in the sense that we look to it and desire it, because his word is greater than we are. The engrafted word is the total implanted word of God, which he planted so close to us that we can absorb it until it becomes a part of us. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, Dave. Subjectively received, you understand? That's why we work this stuff and we think, this is how I work these principles. You put yourself there. When you're studying this stuff, okay, how does this apply to me? Do I need to change my mind here? Do I need to think differently? Am I believing in God? Am I putting something else ahead of God? Am I focused in? Have I turned in on myself to turn myself into a large intestine? Full of crap. Have I done that? Subjectively, you're the subject. You receive God's word. It is this, that's about you, you and the word. Not where you turn in and you start thinking about my problems, my needs, oh, I've got all this stuff. Oh, it's me, 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 me. No, we put the word in there and the word takes care of you, 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 you. So that's you and God, 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 God. Till it becomes a part of us. Okay, here's what's not in your, in the blue book you have. It says, if we keep our minds renewed on God's word, the love of God is perfected in our minds. And thus, we give no opportunity to the flesh to hate, dislike, or slight a brother in Christ. Now look at how this will affect your being released from prison. First John two eleven says, you can go there, first John two eleven. You may not think this, but yeah. This affects your release. Guy says. Sliding a brother in Christ, first John two eleven says, but he that hateth his brother is in darkness. Uh-oh, that sounds like gloom, doesn't it? Sounds like melancholy. Sounds like stuff we don't wanna be messing with. And walketh in darkness. How can you be in fellowship if you're walking in darkness? You have to be in the light. If you're walking in darkness, you are out of fellowship, having no joy divine, leaning on the adversary's arms. That's not a good thing. And knoweth not whither he goeth, because the darkness hath blinded his eyes. So if you don't know where you're going, you're sure to get there nowhere. Absolute hate is possible only when someone is born of the seed of the devil. Just as the agapi kind of love is possible only when a person is born of God's seed. The word hate used may mean either dislike or dislike issuing in the absolute hate of the devil. In first John two eleven, hate is speaking of born again believers hating, disliking a brother. So we need to renew our minds when we start to, hey, that's one of the things, that's one of the tricks. See how that works? We start to hate or dislike a brother. We may not like something a brother is doing if they're off the word, right? But we don't translate what they're doing onto them and start to hate or dislike our brothers. He who slights, hates, or hates, dislikes, his brother has not renewed his mind on God's word and is walking in darkness. Anyone walking in darkness just wanders aimlessly, not knowing where he is going. The Telugu translation of Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen, you can go there, Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen. Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen. Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen. What'd I say? Proverbs thirteen? Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen. Twenty-nine, that reminds me of another verse in Proverbs.
Twenty-two, twenty-nine.
Which says?
See if thou mannes diligent in his business, he shall stand before a king. Thou shalt not stand before a mean ordinary man.
Alright, beautiful.
What was it again?
Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen. Where there is no knowledge of God, the people wander aimlessly. That's the Telugu translation. Where there is no knowledge of God, the people wander aimlessly. Ah, that can't be a good thing. Or I think it says in King James, without a vision, the people perish. Is that it?
Yeah.
I do not care who you are. We're back to the regular book. Point being, don't hate or dislike or slight your brother in Christ and think that it's a good thing and that, you know, you can just have that attitude because they so deserve what I think about them. Well, can you forgive them? No. Ooh. Condemnation, hard-hearted, lustful, unforgiving, unthankful. Ding, 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 ding. That's one of the things you don't want in your mind. Okay. I do not care who you are. I don't either. Matter of fact, who are you people? Or in what prison you may be? Change yourself. How? By changing your thinking patterns. And how do you change a thought pattern?
You replace it?
That's correct. That's one thought at a time. You gotta, can you focus on two thoughts at the same? Can you have two thoughts at the same time?
No.
You're not sure.
No, definitely not.
No. Here's a great key to being peaceful when you're not feeling so peaceful. Isaiah, where am I going? Twenty-six, what? Three. Evelyn, that is just wonderful girlfriend. Do you know it by heart? Thou?
Thou will keep him in perfect peace whose mind has stayed on thee because he trusteth in thee.
You are a scripture memorizing machine. Isaiah twenty-six, three, thou will keep him in perfect peace whose mind has stayed on thee because he trusteth in thee. The word, first of all, perfect peace. It's a figure of speech, epizepskis. Easy for me to say. Uh, it's a figure of speech, isn't it, that one?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, epizepskis. And it means, perfect peace is actually the Hebrew words, shalom, shalom. It's peace, peace. Why is it double? That's why they translated it, perfect peace. I mean, you are so peaceful, you make peace peaceful or something. Yeah. You're just perfect peace, totally at peace. One of the great definitions of peace that I've heard through the years, peace is a state of undisturbed believing. Peace is a state of undisturbed believing. Okay, like you're believing for something, okay? Like something involving you, or something involving someone you love. And you're believing. Peace is a state of undisturbed believing. Someone could come up to you and go, huh, you know, and you, you still have chill. You've taken your chill pill, the word. And they go, oh, that's never gonna happen. You'll never get blah, 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 blah. Undisturbed believing. It doesn't ruffle you. It doesn't shake you and make you go, what if they're right about what they said? Maybe I won't ever have to, maybe I won't get my need met. Maybe God won't provide, maybe, you know. Peace, undisturbed believing. You don't get rattled about stuff you're believing for. You might get rattled about a parking space, so what? You're not rattled about what you are believing God for. Undisturbed believing. Thou will keep him in perfect peace whose mind, the word mind is the word for thought or imagination. Ooh, that's sweet. Thought. Whose thought is stayed on thee. You can only think one thought at a time. That's why deliverance class is always just one thought away. If you're thinking fear right now, peace is one thought away. You think instead of fear, God. Love. Perfect love casts out what?
Fear.
Can't be thinking love and fear at the same time. But you can pick one. And if you stay your mind on the thoughts of God, one thought at a time, he'll keep you in perfect peace. That's a promise in God's word. God will absolutely do his part. The word imagination, thought can be translated imagination, gives us, goes back to the picture. Isn't that wonderful? What if you put that picture in your mind of yourself smiling and blessed? That's right. Deliverance is a thought away. So, get those pictures. Imagination, see? Put that image in your mind. And you must work it when you're not under attack. Cause when you're under attack, that's a little late to be cleaning your gun. You know, it's time to be in the competition now to throw your javelin and it's back at the, at your house, you know, and you, at the bus ride away. And everyone's up there and you don't have anything to throw. So you wanna borrow someone else's. And so what do you borrow? The old man. And guess what?
You don't shoot through it.
No, the old man works for the adversary. So you lose, in other words. And if you don't lose that time, you're being set up. That's what I was teaching you. You know, you think that something happens and you think, okay, I'm just gonna be strong, I'm just gonna be strong, I'm just gonna be strong. And that's what you're telling yourself, I'm just gonna be strong. And so nothing happens. You go, oh, just because I was strong. Baloney. You better put the word on in your mind. Let the word be there, cause the word really is strong. That's your strength, God in Christ in you and that word, see? You rely on that word of God. That's what Jesus Christ used to defeat the devil. It is written, that's what we must use, the word, not your personal strength. Oh gee, what's that about? You're weak, so am I. We're earth and vessels. The excellency of the power is of God and not of us. Whose mind has stayed on thee because he trusteth in thee. Well, I remember in this very chapter, it says, if ye continue in my word, then are ye my disciples indeed, and ye shall experience the truth, and the truth shall make you free. We gotta have the guts to hang in there, to continue in the word until it happens. What? What's the hurry? If God doesn't do it, is it gonna be good when it gets done? If God's not involved in that process? If it doesn't come from God, it's gonna be crap anyway. It won't be Scottish, it'll be crap. If it's not Scottish, it's crap. Well, everything God does must be Scottish, cause it's wonderful, see? Beautiful, anyway. Stay, abide, continue, dwell, see? Chuck put it in a wonderful way. It's like a house, man. I'm living in a new house and that's where I dwell and I'm not going back to the old house to live there anymore. You're gonna be working on that literally, huh? Anyway. I don't care who you are, what prison. Change yourself by changing your thinking patterns and then the circumstances will change. And what do we usually try to do first?
Change the circumstances.
We try to change the circumstances. That's not the proper order. The first thing you do is change yourself. Why? Because this pen is an object. The object doesn't change, but the subject can change. And what's the subject, class, from what I taught you, what you remember?
Mind, your brain, your thinking.
Yeah, the subject is how you view the object. Yes, when you're starting to work on this picture thing, you get your object in mind. But then you focus the subject properly. That deals with how you see the object that you want to occur. You get all the details involved in that. When it comes to something you wanna get out of, the object may be what it is, it is what it is. But your subject can be different. That's why you could be in a Nazi concentration camp and be positive. That's why you can be in a living situation that's not good and be positive. Why? Because you changed your subject. Instead of focusing on the negative, focusing on the problem, focusing on the darkness, focusing on the challenges, you focus on the solution. You get the picture of the solution in your mind. You understand that? That's how it works to get delivered, to get out. You don't get out by focusing on the negative and always bringing up the negative, talking about the negative, spreading the negatives around. You're just spreading manure and there's gonna be some stuff growing up, but the roots are not gonna be good. Bitterness, all that kinda stuff. Clamor gets going where you're yakking about the negative. That's no good. We wanna talk the positive. So what do you do? Get that picture in your mind of your deliverance. Not being delivered, but delivered. I confess that I have been.
Delivered.
Delivered, see? Past tense, from the power of darkness by my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Delivered, it's past tense. That's what you see. You see yourself already delivered. Like we see ourselves already on the field, teaching the word, riding around the motor coach. And we should be. We see ourselves, you know, already having this house sold. Evelyn and I have a picture, Evelyn and I jumping up and down going, yeah, 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 like this. What's your picture, Eddie?
Uh, for sale, sold, for sale, sold across the sign and, uh, standing in front of the sign.
Okay.
With the new people coming, you know, you know, all that stuff in the truck, ready to move out.
I think you're someone moving all that stuff to the truck.
There you go. It's beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
It's wonderful. And then the circumstances will change. This is the law of believing. This is how it really works. Study God's word and you will learn to know, yes.
Okay, believe, you can't believe for another person.
No.
So if you're believing for a situation with another person, what is the point where you either stop believing or you, I mean, what, what, how does that work?
Well, that's a very good question. The first thing we always find out is what is available. Now, the per, let's say it's someone that you'd love to, you think you'd like to marry, for example. Just, that's just one. But it takes two people to fulfill that transaction. What you can picture is yourself totally blessed and happy on the arm of some man. You can picture that. The pa, the face might change. I guess you could change everybody parts too. Well, we won't get into that. At least I get enough emails telling me you can. No, it's another story. That, cause you can't control that that's the face that's gonna be there. Now, how could you know that that's the face that's gonna be there?
Revelation.
Revelation. So if God tells you, then you could picture that and you hold that picture. If God hasn't told you, then all you have is what the written word says, which is that it is available for a Christian to marry another Christian and have, be blessed and happy and have an enjoyable life. But the specific face involves the freedom of will of the other person. Does that help? It's the same thing in any other specific situation. You go to the word, if the word says, hey, that's you can have, then you can picture that in full brilliance and beauty. The part that the word doesn't say, until you get some information, you can't really believe for that. It can be something that you, understand? Great. If the Son therefore, oh, study God's word and you will learn to know that Christ has made you free. If the Son therefore shall make you free, ye shall be free indeed. Outside of Christ, we cannot be free. Jesus Christ was the liberator who set us free. He is the head of the church, not me or anybody else. Christ is the head. What about the Pope? Nope, he's not the head. The truth of the word and of Christ. And where is Christ now? It's Christ in you. Yes, the literal Jesus Christ is seated at the right hand of God. But it's God and Christ in you. So how far away are they really? See, we always wanna picture God and Christ, God and Christ way, way somewhere out there. But there is no time with God. There's no distance with God. Think of it like the speed of light. How fast does light travel?
Three hundred thousand milliseconds a square.
Huh? Okay.
Per second part.
Yeah? Go ahead.
Per second.
Oh, you know that part? A hundred eighty, a hundred eighty-six thousand miles...
Per second.
There you go. A hundred eighty-six thousand miles a second? So, if God were a hundred eighty-six thousand miles away, he'd still only be a second away and that's if he only traveled as fast as light. There you go. But he's not physical light, he's spiritual light. So, can you imagine something being faster than God? And even that puts it in our terms where, you know, we don't even understand. So, in other words, it's God in Christ in you. That's the way he says it. So how far away is God?
Nowhere.
There's no distance. There's no time with God. God in Christ in you. So wherever you walk, wherever you go, you go to your job, it's God in Christ in you, right there, right now. You don't have to go, oh God, please come down and help me. He doesn't have to come down anywhere. It's God in Christ, Christ in you. Right there. If you go to court, where is God? In Christ in you. Wherever you go, it's God in Christ. He's right there, not way, but right here. Right there. It's in God in Christ in you. Anyway. "The truth of the Word and of Christ is our light and power in life." This is our release from fears, worries, anxieties, frustrations, heartaches, headaches, and everything else that comes along. Not medication. Now, hey, if your believing is at the point where you need medication, you still have God in Christ in you when you're using medication, don't you?
Yes.
Absolutely. So, do you still believe God?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't believe the drug, you believe God. We were talking about this, Chuck and I. From a picturing and, I mean, mindset standpoint, when you hurt yourself or you're sick, first thing you do by yourself is you go to God first. And you can think of it as the vertical relationship of going directly to God. Yes, it's God in Christ in you, so it's not going anywhere. I don't have to go anywhere. But it's vertical, you to God, you directly to God. God is above you, higher than you. You to God, see, God to you. Vertical, God the Creator. Well, now, what if you're not just gelling the principles of the Word good enough right then? What do you do next? You go to a believer. But who are you going to?
God.
God as Lord. Horizontal, Jehovah as Lord. You're still going to God. It's not that believer's power. It's God in Christ in them. You're going to God and so you're still believing because you're going to God. And boy, when they pray, you're locking in because it's what God has to say about your situation. And you do your best to believe what God says, spoken by that believer, so you get healed. Well, what if you're still just not gelling it big enough? You're just, you're not clicking yet yourself and you don't, at that point, get physically healed? Then what do you do? Well, you go to the best doctor you can find. You go to the best hospital. You get the best medication you can possibly get. And when you do that, who are you going to? God. Because God designed your body to heal itself. See, it's God, God, God. We never think in terms of going to anyone else but God. It's just what we gotta do along the way. So when you take that pill, who are you thanking? God, not GlaxoWellcome Pharmacy, you know, or Squibb. Can you imagine that? Thank you, Squibb, for giving me this pill. Squibb? Sounds like squid or something, or cat. Gotcha. You go to God every time, every time, every time. No matter what, it's always God, God, God. Sure, you're taking some medication because you just didn't get it, but you still are thanking God. Okay, God, I thank you that I won't have to use this much longer. God, I thank you that this will just be the last time. Everywhere along the way, you go to God. This is the means to get out of the negative prisons of self enslavement. God's not putting you in prison. And once you're born again, really, he took you out. The adversary cannot put you back in. You have to go back in. Now, he puts a lot of prisons around you. Hey, would you like this prison? You know, it has soft padding. So you can't see the bars, but it's still prison. Handcuffs for sale, handcuffs for sale. And he makes it sound so good. It's still prison. But we're the ones who have to walk in. And once you start walking toward the prison, at some point, something else takes control and now you no longer are in control. You find yourself in prison. You don't even know how you got there. You started on the path. We had some sharings of some deliverance and things that happened. That's why it's so important not to slight or dislike your brother. Because, you know, the real you inside is Christ in you. And the Christ in you never wants to do anything dumb or stupid or... But other things get involved that if our brothers and sisters don't control their minds, then somebody will control them. So we shouldn't be hateful or dislikeful or against our brother or judge our brother because it's not our brother doing it. It's not our brother or sister doing it. It's something else doing it. And sometimes we get fooled because someone may have personality that's a certain way. You know, or for years, you know, you think it's just something or you might think it's shyness, you know, oh, that person is just shy. Well, shy is something for three-year-old kids. Yeah, you're an adult now. Being shy has other issues. There are other issues involved. If someone's still shy after twenty, thirty years, something's up. But we can just... Because society wants to keep us dull and not be sharp to, wait a second, what's going on? And it's not that we're looking all around for devil spirits all the time. That's not it. That's not it. We're looking around to love our brothers and our sisters. And to help them. And to care for them. Otherwise, God's not gonna show you anything anyway. He's not gonna show you if you don't love. You think you're, I'm seeing all this, you know, that person, boy, they're really, they were really possessed today. That's not good thinking. That's your thinking, what's God gonna show you? It's not gonna be God showing you stuff. Tell you that. It's gonna be the adversary showing you stuff. Then where does that put you? Exactly where you're putting them. Because of our desire to serve and to love and bless people, that God can show you some stuff so you can help somebody. Then you just do it. You're obedient and you do it. Well, we'll wrap this chapter up. And then I'm sure you'll have something to share after that. Yeah, this is our means to get out of the negative prisons of self enslavement into the glorious liberty, we're on page 10, of the children of God. Glorious liberty, you're free, hallelujah! When you find yourself in one of life's prisons, get a positive, clear picture of your freed self. Do it quick, do it now. Focus in on the positive image and thank God that right now you have the answer. Keep confessing and believing positively according to the Word and your release will absolutely follow. Verse that, I promised to give you this verse and give you some instruction. Here it is. It's in 2 Corinthians, chapter... 3. Chapter 3. And I'd like you to memorize these two verses, you know, add them to your list. I'm not necessarily gonna give you a quiz tomorrow. Start working on them. 2 Corinthians 3 verses 17 and 18. "Now the Lord is that Spirit, and where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty. But we all, with open face," that means without a veil, "beholding as in a glass." Glass is mirror. So it's beholding yourself continuously in a mirror. "The glory of the Lord we're beholding in a mirror," as in a mirror, "the glory of the Lord are changed." See? Change your picture, change your thinking, remember? And if you do that and you look at that continuously, you are changed into the same image. What are you looking at? The glory of the Lord. Are changed into the same image from glory to glory, one glory reflecting another glory, even as by the Spirit of the Lord. So here's what I want you to do. You can put this up on your mirror if you like or you could just do it without sticking up on your mirror. But when you go to your mirror, drop the day to the next week, every chance you get. Especially if there's nobody around. Now, if you're in this house, it's okay if somebody's around because we all know what you're doing. Go to that mirror and look at it and go, behold, the glory of the Lord! Say just that. Look at yourself in the mirror and smile and go, behold, the glory of the Lord! And I guarantee you, you can't be down and melancholy and depressed and oppressed and sullen and all those things at the same time that you're looking in that mirror going, behold, the glory of the Lord! Alright? That's your sign of it. Alright, God bless.